All right. Hi. Before we start, I want to welcome our newest planning board member to my left, Bill Die. Excellent addition. I've known Bill for years. We're really excited to have him here. So welcome.
Thank you.
And next, I'd like to approve, we're behind on approving minutes, so I'd like to, a motion to approve the minutes of February 5th, March 4th, and April 1st. Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Amanda, you had some comments on the April 15th minutes, right?
Yes, can you hear me, Mark?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Yes, I did, and I've written to the board clerk, Antoinette Edwards, and yeah, they have to be revised.
Okay.
So I think she's aware of that.
Okay.
So she'll do that, review them again.
Perfect. So when you get those comments in, we'll revise them and then approve those at our next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It just were not accurate, so she's aware. I understand that. So they'll be taken care of, and hopefully next meeting we'll be able to.
Okay, great. First on the agenda tonight is, I'm gonna do this a little bit out of order, is R.F.A.C. F.L.L.C.
We might want to put Mr. Bennett in the hallway, I believe.
Yeah, okay. I mean, public hearing's closed on this.
He can stay with Adam. He's not necessary.
We'll wait till he comes back. But public hearing is closed on this, so we're not going to take any comments.
Public hearing is closed. You have to, Mr. Bennett, can speak.
He can or cannot speak?
He can, he can, he may.
He may speak?
He may speak, yes.
Even though the public hearing's been closed?
Yes, his applicant's counsel.
Okay. Yep, okay. We've circulated a draft resolution to the board members that I assume everyone's had a chance to read and I know comment on it. So, John, I'm gonna make a motion to adopt that resolution, or do we want to hear from John first?
We can hear from applicant's counsel.
What resolution are you adopting? Sorry, I have to say it again, I apologize. Mark, I didn't hear it.
There is a resolution that's been drafted and circulated to the board members to approve the sketch plan with certain conditions, the preliminary sketch plan with certain conditions.
Yes. I've just read it very briefly and seen it for the first time. So I think what I'd like to do, probably, is ultimately, I'm gonna ask you to adjourn it, but I find myself in a position where something's just not sinking in. I'm very appreciative of the time that you guys all sacrificed to do this, and I'm not just saying this in that in a rude way, because it's not, sometimes I think, my gosh, you have a hole in your head to take on this task, because it's a thankless task in many ways, and I'm extremely appreciative of it. But when you become a member of this board, you agree to certain rules, you have to abide by the rules. If we're playing football, you play on a hundred-yard playing field, you have four downs to make ten yards. If you're, it's this fourth down and you're thirty feet from the goal yard, you're gonna kick up a field goal. But when you walk on that gridiron, you agree to play by the rules. And it's the same thing that happens when you become a member of this board. You have to play within certain, and I say "play" in quotes, within certain, you have to play within the law. So I just want you to think about this, because I'm gonna ask you to adjourn this, but it's the only opportunity that I get to speak to you folks about this stuff, and to speak with you directly. So the last proposed condition, paragraph seven, I'll probably run from the back, I will tell you as a practitioner for forty-three years now, this condition violates the Fifth Amendment of the United States Constitution. It is a condition which requires, and I'm not being like grand eloquent or something like that, this is a condition that does not allow me to exclude people from my property. And on, as I'll tell you in law school, property comes, is like a bundle of rights, and you can give out, bundle of sticks, I should say, and you can give out pieces of that sticks, but if a government wants to take one of those pieces of property away from you, it can't do it unless it offers compensation. So what have you done here? You've said that thirty days' written notice to inspect the pond and perform remediation or cleaning. Now what that is, is that's an intrusion onto private property. So let me read from you, the Second Department case in Mackel versus White, it's a 1981 case from East Hampton, in which case they, upon a subdivision in East Hampton, the East Hampton Planning Board attempted on a trail that had been in public use but never, an old trail which members of the public have used to gain access to the beach. And the planning board said, well, we're going to make you impose as a condition a declaration of non-hindrance, permitted public access for, to the beach. And the Second Department, in claiming, in tolding that that's illegal, and by the way, this case is a Second Department case, but the Court of Appeals denied a motion for leave to appeal, which the Court of Appeals, means the Court of Appeals, the high state, the court agreed with this. This is from the court, the petitioners conditioned, the approval was conditioned on the petitioner filing a declaration of non-hindrance permitting public use as a means of access to the beach. Petitioner commenced this proceeding seeking deletion. The lower court, Supreme Court of Suffolk County, granted the petition concluding the condition of matter to a public taking of property without compensation. And then this court, in quoting another case, Holmes versus Planning Board of Newcastle, stated, "As special term properly founded, there is currently no lawful public access to the beach over the petitioner's property. The proposed subdivision will in no manner alter this state. While the problem of diminishing access to the beach is a matter of serious public concern, it is not one which can be alleviated by requiring petitioner to dedicate a portion of her property to the public use. It was therefore improper for the planning board to require filing a declaration of non-hindrance." That means this is illegal. Now, what happened previously, Mr. Borkwin, who's doing a wonderful job in trying to get as close as he can to the tasks that you have given him, cited a case, Smith versus Town of Menden. What's interesting in Smith versus Town of Menden is the court, there were a couple of dissents, but it doesn't matter, there's dissent, the dissent, the sense don't matter, because ultimately you have a ruling upheld that municipality's subdivision approval. But what that court said, over and over and over again, is that, let me get it for you, because it's very, very, very important, this language. The Smiths, these are the people who are subdividing the property, fully retain the right to exclude third persons. What was happening in this case that your counsel has cited? In this case that your counsel has cited, a property owner was required in order to improve a piece of property, to impose conservation easements in an area that the town had already designated as being subject to conservation setbacks and conservation controls. That's the sort of stuff not only do we do all the time, but we've offered that here. I guess this individual didn't like that, and two dissents agree with him, but the court, the Court of Appeals said that was not a taking, because it wasn't a right of public access. All we were doing is saying, in this area that's already a conservation, governed by conservation laws, we want to impose an easement. But the court went out in unequivocal language, said, "We are not at all taking away the right to exclude third persons, the rights that the Smiths, that was the defendant here, or the plaintiff here, fully retain." What did they require in this case? They said, "You could go down on certain notice and inspect the property, inspect the property, that's it. Inspect the property to make sure that the conditions of the permit that we granted have been adhered to." So for example, in this case, if there are conservation permits granted, the board grants wetlands permits to say that you have to have a buffer within 125 feet, no structures within 150 feet, and no septic systems within 200 feet, which by the way, we have offered. You know, that's what they were fighting about in this case, we offered that affirmatively, because we think that's a, we actually, contrary to these plaintiffs, think that's a fair thing. We don't care, it's already regulated. If you want a conservation easement on it, we'll do that, that's fine. But the court here said, "If the municipality wants to go down and inspect, inspect what's going on down there after notice, that's not an unnecessarily bad intrusion." It's, that's not what you're talking about here. You're talking about to perform environmentally necessary remediation or cleaning. That's a full intrusion. That's not testing to make sure, that's not going down and examining to make sure that Mr. Farrell or one of his successors and interests has, has, has lived up to the terms of a, of a permit condition. That's insisting on giving the public, and the government and the public, a right of access. I can't exclude them, and that's one of my constitutional rights. And as the court, as the Supreme Court, there's a bunch of cases, there's the Nolan case, there's the, there's the Dolan case, but one of my favorite quotes is from the Supreme Court, this is the Supreme Court of the United States, John S. Waterman versus Coons, "Pressuring someone into forfeiting a constitutional right by coercively withholding benefits of approval is also unconstitutional." So I sympathize with your desire to get some sort of access down there, but you can't take it from my client in an unconstitutional manner. We gave you a drainage easement on the property, on the Halsey property, which should have been the beginning and the end of this discussion, but for some reason, somebody doesn't think it's enough. For the life of me, I can't understand why. Over the Halsey property, right down to the pond, this is an easement which was originally granted between the Halsey family, but was then extended to the village of Southampton, together with the right to lay pipe and to construct other drainage facilities long in the ponds, that strip of land, and to use same in any manner which may be necessary and appropriate for drainage purposes. Has anyone read this? I don't understand why this doesn't do, I mean, honestly, it fell in our laps, we were very happy, because we didn't have, want to make the constitutional arguments here that we're making, being forced to make now. This was a eureka for us, wow, the board's concerned about this, this is an existing right that not only runs to the village, but runs with the land. So that's what, that's what you have here. And then, just in terms of, I've looked through all the subdivision history here, and it's on this tax map, I'll actually give you copies of the, of the tax map and copies of some photographs of the area, so you can see what I'm talking about. If I did trouble you, Kathy, to pass those down. This is the subject property, it's tax map 59.2, pointing to it, I'm indicating it's on the tax map. There's the Halsey family subdivision, which is on Phillips Pond, which is where, where that drainage easement runs through, that existing drainage easement. You didn't ask, you didn't ask anyone on that subdivision to give you any sort of access like this, presumably because people weren't satisfied with the drainage easement, but you never tried to exact any sort of access like you're trying to exact here on this You can't see Barron's Lane, it's between Beach Home and Murray, but it's a series of right-of-aways that form Barron's Lane. And at the end of Barron's Lane, you have three lots. The last lot, which I believe currently is owned by Leslie Alexander, it's lot number 46.3, right here, it's the word Southampton, it appears on the subway portion of it. That was a three-lot subdivision, no one asked for any access to Phillips Pond when that subdivision was approved. That was a three-lot subdivision, it was unsubdivided a piece of property, no one asked for any access when that happened. About five or six years ago, you'll see, if you look at the far right of the tax map, Village of Southampton, the last part of Southampton is running north and south, up and down, that's a two-lot subdivision that I handled probably five years ago, it was, gosh, help me, the two guys are builders. Lipton Green, thank you, Lipton Green, two-lot subdivision, no one asked for any access to the pond there. The Conic Land Trust property, that was a three-lot subdivision, now there are two two-lot lots, and then Mr. Blot owns the lot at the end, that was originally Pete Peters' house, it was a three-lot subdivision. No one asked, no one asked for any access to the pond then. So in addition to being treated unconstitutionally, I'm being, being treated in a way that's, I'm being held to a higher standard. If you flip to the top of the handout, there's an aerial photograph where it says, "Owned by the Village of Southampton." Those are two lots that, those are two lots that were deeded to the town of Southampton by the Fowler family. I'd say, if you, if you want to talk to the, if the village wants to talk to the owner down there and try to take, pick up that little gap of about forty or fifty feet, lock yourself out. But the Fowler family has done, has clearly done enough. These two lots, in addition to Fowler Street and in addition to the park, to the west of here, were deeded to the Village of Southampton by the Fowler family. There's a much closer access there, that you've got the little private strip there, but maybe the village has to talk to somebody down there, the owner of that piece of property, to get access down there. And then we go, we go to the whole concept of nexus, there's, you don't have access to the pond now, that's with the Smith case, not the Smith case, that's with the first case that I talked to you about, the Mackel versus White case, you don't have access now, that's not going to change, there's no nexus between the access and the subdivision. What could your possible argument be, but it doesn't work? Okay, we're concerned about runoff, so you're creating seven lots down there. Well, I would challenge anyone, now, the property right now is farmed right to the wetlands, absolutely legal, absolutely legal. So what are we doing? When these lots are going to be developed, they will be subject to offered covenants and restrictions, we've offered them, that setbacks of 120 feet for any non-native vegetation, setbacks of 150 feet for any structures of any nature, setbacks of 200 feet for any wastewater systems. And these properties will be subject, they'll be, when developed, will be fully drained. And I would challenge anyone to say that actually, there's no nexus between the subdivision and the request for access to the pond, the only nexus that we can find is a beneficial one. Because these lots and the imposition of covenants which have been offered, to the extent that you have some runoff argument, it's actually going to be a substantial and wonderful environmental benefit. So I don't know how to, I don't know what to tell you, I think you have to, you have to speak to, you have to speak to your counsel again, maybe speak to the village attorney, maybe speak to some sort of outside counsel or something like that. This is a violation of the Fifth Amendment, there's no question about it. And I hate to be in here as a, as a village resident who loves this village and lives here, raised my family here, I've been a proud practitioner before every single board of the Village of Southampton, to come in here and think that you, think I'm rattling my saber here. I'm not doing that, I'm just telling you, these are the, these are the, these are the rules that you have to follow. And I will say this as well, if someone, and I've said this very directly to Mr. Borkwin, who's been a gentleman throughout this process, as have you, Mr. Chairman, and as have all the board members, with maybe one possible exception that I can think of is no longer here, but in any event, you've all been very gentle personally throughout the process. But I offer you this, if you can demonstrate, if someone can demonstrate to me that this isn't a taking, because you're telling me that I can't exclude third parties, and I don't want you to do it now, because I don't want to get in the back and forth, and I don't want John to feel like I'm putting him on the spot or anything like that, far from it, but if you can show to me that somehow this is not a taking, I'll sit down with Rick and say, "Rick, you know, you've got to take care of this, because it is not an unconstitutional action." But I don't, I cannot, I do not see it any other way. And I'm trying right now to get on both sides of the table and try to come, to help us all get this done in a way that's proper. I mean, I have some other issues with some of the, and so does the client, he's very, rather surprised by some of the limitations in this, I mean, I think you'd probably get in trouble with the farm people for some of these limitations that you've put in this, I'm gonna ask you for another.
I don't have any more hard copies. I can email them to you if you'd still like.
I'll find it somewhere. But what I'd like you to do is, I'd like you to adjourn this, I think maybe a little bit of detached analysis and consideration of some of the things that I've said and the authorities that I've presented to you, which I'd be more than happy to present to you again. Ah, here, I have it here. Hopefully, we can come to a situation where we can do what I think this board should be doing, is simply approving the sketch plan, the purposes for a sketch plan are not to, not to do all, some of the things that you've done in here. This is, this looks, this is like a final conditional approval, which is not what you're supposed to be doing now, you're supposed to be saying that you're generally happy with the layout, and it's been over a year and a half. And again, you know, I want to, I want to say to you, this is not a situation, for example, like the Husky situation, where you had a two-step process, you had a sketch plan that had an awful lot of conditions in it, because you went directly from sketch plan to final. We've agreed that this is going to go sketch plan, preliminary, final. I don't know why you're struggling with all of these things, this should have been a sketch plan approved when everyone, when we got, we came in with 12 lots, you didn't like it, we went to 10, you didn't like that, we went to seven, we created 20% open space, 25% open space, where only, even the master plan says only 20, and there is no mandatory cluster, mandatory open space. We've given you an ag reserve document that in terms of enforcement is the strongest I've ever seen. I know a man was concerned about whether or not people would have to come back to you to amend that document, because it had it as only the trustees and subject to a mandatory referendum, if you want to make it subject to the planning board approving any changes. I don't care if you make it subject to the Parliament of the United Kingdom making the changes, the ag reserve document, because it ain't never going to happen, it's never going to happen. Once we come to the terms of what the ag reserve agreement should say, no one's ever going to change it. I've never seen an application since these documents started becoming, created, being created over 50 years ago, anyone seeing a change. So I would like you to adjourn it, but I ask you to take a very serious and studied approach at this. I'm confident that some of the stuff that you're doing here just ain't within your powers, and I thank you, and I say that with all respect, I really do, and I thank you for the way you handled this. Maybe not substantively, but certainly procedurally and your demeanor, I appreciate it.
Sure. Do you want to respond to any of that, because, but I really don't want to get into a...
Understood, I know that, I'm sure Mr. Bennett doesn't want to get into a full, a full discussion tonight, but if there's anything that I can offer to the board by way of explanation, Smith versus Town of Menden, which I know is the case that I've invoked before this board before, the Court of Appeals sustained a town's conditioning of a land use approval on the maintenance of restricted area on which the town on 30 days' written notice could enter the property to safeguard the environmentally sensitive parcels, that's at page seven. The court there noted and discussed classic easements and exactions cases, Nolan and Dolan, which at that point were the, the gold standard for the takings clause jurisprudence, and noted amongst other things that the most important stick in the bundle of property rights, the right to exclude others, was not affected there. That's at page 11 and 12. So it's, the, the legal argument that exists, if it does exist, is at the outset, safeguarding the environmentally sensitive parcel, what we will be able to do under the guise of safeguarding. But the way that I see it is, as far as the argument of excluding others, the applicant still does have the right to exclude the general public, the general public at large can't traipse down this easement and go swimming in the pond, can't back trucks up to the pond and have a bonfire, it would be limited only to municipal, municipal access for environmental purposes. So that, that is my position from Smith versus Town of Menden, and it's for the board to see what priority they want to ascribe to reviewing this.
Thanks, John. Except that's not what Town of Menden says, excluding people includes, most importantly, the government. That's all the case is saying.
Okay. Yeah, we're not going to get into a legal debate here. Any questions from board members? Of Mr. Bennett?
John, I just, this law, this statute says, the F and C trustees.
Excuse me?
The F and C trustees are included in this writing.
Well, if you look at...
The trustees of the freeholders in commonality, I've called them forever, the F and C trustees.
That's right.
Alan, the issue, I think, for our larger concern, which is absolutely the Fowler family, but the pond, for anyone who's there, the issue is, who owns, quote, "owns control" or "control" of the pond? It's this mess on Agawam and Old Town. The F and C trustees have jurisdiction. I don't think this Phillips Pond was excluded in the law as owned, not by the DEC, but by the F and C trustees.
No, I'm not...
But the question is, who, who's responsible for something that happens to the pond? The F and C trustees, do they, they can...
It's interesting, the tax map, tax map says, the Village of Southampton.
Okay.
I couldn't find any deed from the trustees of the Conalty and freeholders of the Town of Southampton into the village. Typically, these ponds are owned by the trustees. Understand, I'm not making any claim whatsoever to ownership of the pond, I'm saying it's, our property, Mr. Fowler's property bounds the pond.
If two owners own the land around the pond.
Yes.
Gary Halsey is the major owner so far.
Yes.
The big, the big part is the north part for the Fowler's. The question that I think it's, needs to simply be addressed properly, is that for the F and C trustees, if something happens to the pond, rain, or, it's a shallow pond, as I understand it, and there's a lot of runoff, the usual stuff with phosphates, the Fowler's, for three generations, understand it in spades, it's not a trivial issue, they know all about it. If someone has to take action with respect to the pond, what governs the access of the F and C trustees to deal with the pond?
Well, right now, it would be governed by...
There's an easement of a pipe.
It would be governed, no, it doesn't say that, Alan. Alan, it says, "Any drainage structures or use any other, any other, any other purposes for drainage..."
Oh, you read it, I listened, I read it too, any other, if that physically solves it, and at least one of the F and C trustees came a couple of times to this meeting, they were very interested in the end result for Phillips Pond.
I haven't seen...
Yeah, no one here today.
I haven't seen anyone from the, from the trustees of the Conalty and the freeholders come here and make any comment about that, I've been to every meeting. I haven't seen anyone from the, from the trustees of the commonalty and the freeholders come here and make any comment about that. I've been to every meeting.
Well, you missed him.
Okay, but here, that, that's an intergovernmental issue, Alan. We're not talking about that. I'm not claiming to own, uh, uh, own, I don't claim, the Fellers don't claim any ownership of the pond.
I'm not saying you, you're claiming, the question before the House
Is who maintains it?
Before, is access for the F and C trustees to the pond. And I, I'll give you the question, and you may have a brilliant answer, but that's, it, it, if this easement, which was set up for the pipe, so I'll say, I'll call it the pipe easement for subtraction.
It doesn't say that.
For, for Gary, whoever, uh, Halsey did. If that covers it and the wording is adequate, that's fine.
Just, just so you know, let me, let me, let me make sure everyone understands it. To- together with the right to lay pipe and construct other drainage facilities, and to use in any manner which may be necessary and appropriate for drainage purposes, what would you want?
If, if drainage, it, it may be more than drainage.
It may be more than drainage, I think is the point.
It may, it may be putting chemicals in, it, it's a big history of dealing with water out here.
Okay, but let me be very blunt. If that's a public problem, as the court said in the, in the second part of the case that I read, read to you, what, let's assume, I'm assuming that's a public issue.
Okay.
As the court, the second department said, that's a serious issue, but you can't extract that. You can't put that on the private property owner.
Okay, so
That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. I, I understand why, I prefaced everything with, I appreciate what you folks are doing, and I don't think you're trying to do anything other than for the public good, but the question becomes where? Maybe you've gotta condemn a little piece of the strip down there. Maybe the trustees, maybe the trustees have to go hat in hand to somebody else and ask them for access.
There are lots of solutions.
Problem to solve.
The problem I think is in front of us, I just wanted to say that with the ponds and with the F and C trustees and these, we have, we probably have to come with a satisfactory solution for the purposes of the goddamn government.
I guess the other question that I have to you is, why is that your problem? It's to me, it's the, it's the mayor and the trustees' problem. If they're concerned about this, them figuring out some way to get access. But we can't extract that on a subdivision of a
Our esteemed chairman may ask the mayor and the trustees to come and appear, but we, we gotta, we'd like to responsibly find us a workable solution.
I mean, I'll give you some other examples of some applications where this has, 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 has come up. Look, this is important. I was representing Tesla on the, uh, their dealership on, on the, just in, uh, outside of the village, just one or two lots outside of the village, just now Colette. And one of the planning board members wanted me to have Tesla give public access to the charging stations. One of them did, and everyone on the planning board, not only including their council, said, you can't do that. Okay, number one, okay. Um, Parish Pond, subdivision that I handle, a 36 lot subdivision. The, 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 some of the planning board members wanted their trail access up there for the public. And the other board members are saying, you can't require that. That's an extraction.
You've made the argument, I, if Tesla's the same as the F and C trustees, there's no issue.
No, you know, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying, it doesn't matter the entity, but what matters is
I don't wanna argue with you.
Okay.
The issue needs to be solved with a, a yet another pond for access. And we need, if, if we don't put it, uh, on record in fair, eager discussion with the Fowler family to deal with it. You know, and you just said there may be other, other ways to do it, which are a pain in the neck and delay and
But you shouldn't hold up, you shouldn't hold up a sketch plan approval on that. Because we're still preliminary and final, and I should be able to have a sketch plan approval so that I can go and file my application with the Health Department. This, this family has been incredibly sensitive.
I understand it, yes, I know all about it.
And Town of Menden, Smith versus Town of Menden, I, I haven't spoken to my client, but if you want as a condition, if somebody builds a house on one of these lots, let me finish, if one somebody builds a house on one of these lots, and they're imposed the covenant of 125, 150, 200, and after construction on 30 days' notice, somebody wants to go down there and make sure that somebody hasn't taken up all the native planting and put, um, you know, Kentucky bluegrass right down to the wetlands, I, I, I don't think I can have a problem with that, because that's the beginning and the end of what this case says. Remember what this case was all about? This case was, they had an area, a conservation area, that was set up by law, and somebody, and that municipality said, yes, we have this conservation area, but when you come in for your permit, and that was by law, we want you to put a conservation easement over that. And I quite candidly, surprisingly, these guys fought about it, and I remember the first time I read this case, I said, well, I've been doing that for 35 years. You want a conservation easement? I can't do anything down there anyway. So here, if that makes you feel better municipality, here's the conservation. That's what this case is about. Other than, uh, an occasional right for somebody to walk down and make sure that no one's violating a permit. That's all.
Got it. Um, any other questions?
So I'll get adjourned.
So, before we do that, a couple of things. Look, we're, we're not trying to violate you, your, your client's constitutional rights here, and I think we do know the rules. I think, um, in this day and age, there, um, people are much more sophisticated in their understanding of environmental impact, much more concerned about the long-term impact of, um, environmentally sensitive ponds, grounds, whatever. And I think being good citizens, um, you, you, we wanna make sure that we are protecting whosoever responsibility is, whether it's the village trustees or the F and C trustees, to, to get in there and clean up. From the very beginning of this process, since I've been involved, I think the planning board was very upfront that making sure there is access to this pond to clean up has been an important consideration. Uh, and we're gonna solve that together, right? And the good news was you found this drainage easement, right, which we thought solved it. Now, we're not so sure if it does solve it, because my understanding is, and I was advised of this this afternoon, is that easement does not go all the way to the pond, it stops short of the pond.
Read the meets and bounds description, I, excuse my French, I don't know who the hell is telling you that, but they're wrong.
So it, it's your view that if this easement, it works, this drainage easement, which does save for drainage purposes only, but if this easement works, you can get all the way down there to the pond, uh, to do whatever environmental remediation might be necessary. Is that your view?
If you plot out, I will plot out meets and bounds description for you, and you can see that it's, it, it, it runs to the pond. If somebody has a different opinion on this, they damn well better tell me why.
Okay.
They better prove to me by some legal description why it doesn't run to the pond.
All right. So I think we've gotta work that out, whether it goes to the pond and whether you can, whether it's just for drainage purposes or not. If this does not work, we, we, as a group here, all of us are responsible for finding another way to address this, this challenge. One last thing, yeah, one last thing.
I apologize. More or less to the shoreline of Phillips Pond.
Okay, seems, seems pretty clear to me, I, I, I'm just a messenger, don't
No, 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 but, but this has been
This is, this is what I hear. So, John, I, I hear you. The last thing I wanna say is, you, you, you said that we're taking something? And I don't think, you said that we're taking this from the applicant?
Yes, we are.
And my understanding was this was something that you offered up as part of the, this, you know, an easement here, or it's, you know, somehow we're gonna solve this problem. You offered it up, and when you offered it up, we said, great, that should work.
From the get-go, back even before September of last year, I said, you cannot exact that from me.
We're not exacting, you offered.
No, no, I never, I never offered.
Okay.
The only easements that I offered were easements down by the water to make sure that the, the appropriate buffers would, would be respected.
Yep.
120, let's be really clear, that's really important.
Yeah.
125 for, um, 125 feet for, uh, any sort of, uh, uh, any, anything other than natural vegetation.
Yeah.
Then 150 for any structures, and then 200 feet for any wastewater systems. And then, of course, we offered the, um, the agricultural easement for the 25%.
Yeah.
We offered that. And then, after some discussion, we offered, we put a plan in to have some, create a buffer along the street.
Yeah, I was here for all that, I remember.
Yeah, but we never offered, I've always objected to any exaction of access to the pond, because even if the Halsey easement doesn't work, which again, it's a Phillips Pond, I just underlined it in red. I don't know who is saying it doesn't run the pond, because the meets and bounds description runs right through it. But even if it was, wasn't there, and we were so happy when we found this, even if it wasn't there,
Yeah.
you couldn't exactly find it.
So it might just be semantics. We thought we had a solution, right? We still may have a solution. It's very important, uh, I think to me and, and the other members of the board, to find a solution to this that works for everyone. I'm gonna adjourn this as you requested, but I have to tell you, I'm a little disappointed, because we've worked really hard to push, to push the, the, the process, to push this along, to get you a preliminary site plan approval. And we thought we had, you know, everything, all our ducks in a row, and now
So did I when I gave you that Halsey easement.
Our, our journey this.
And there was a, the, the reaction that we had was, oh, we don't have to worry about the constitutional issue, because now we have this Halsey easement. And there was a collective, with one exception, it was a collective sigh of relief, I remember it quite candidly. But just, this is really important. I, I, this is the second department again, affirmed by the Court of Appeals. This is really important. While the problem of diminishing access to the beach is a matter of serious public concern, okay, you have a matter of serious public concern. I'm not arguing with you on that.
Yeah.
But, 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 it's not one which can properly be alleviated by requiring the petitioner to dedicate a portion of her property to public use.
Totally understand that.
Get to the beach many ways.
Excuse me?
Get to the beach many ways. I mean, there's not just one way to the beach, there's one way to the pond.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. That doesn't change the analysis. Doesn't change the analysis. The question
Your view.
Why? But you have to tell me, I can't just say I differ. This is really the heart of this case right now. The question is whether or not you can say to a private property owner, you cannot exclude the public, and the government is the public. I'm not arguing with you, and I'm not being critical of your desire to get some sort of access there, but absent violating the Fifth Amendment, you cannot direct that as a condition to this approval. Even if you can get past the nexus test. And what's the nexus test? The nexus is, what does this subdivision have to do with the condition that you're concerned about, whatever that condition is? What does this subdivision have to do with a, a, an attempt to access down there? Nothing. There's no nexus.
So, John, tell me if I'm understanding this incorrectly, but we all agreed from the beginning, at least when I've been involved with this, to collectively find a solution to this problem.
And I did. And you've said my solution doesn't, isn't good enough for you. That's what I
Well, I don't, I don't, but the, no, I, I've said
Annoyed, annoyed in a way, you know, not, not, not personally annoyed, but I, I feel from the system, I feel
So, but it's, it's your belief that this easement will provide access for the village or the F and C trustees to clean this pond? Is that, is that
It's what you have. I, I'm not gonna tell you, tell you what I think, how broad this easement is. The only thing that I can tell you is that these are construed fairly, fairly broadly, they're construed against the drafter. The drafter of this said, to use any manner which may be necessary and appropriate for drainage purposes. Why do you drain? Why do you drain? You drain to alleviate a problem. And which is, which is, I've been told, is an issue down there. And, and this is very, very broad. It's very, very broad. It's not just a, yes, it does allow the ability to lay, lay pipe and construct other drainage facilities along, in, and upon said strip of land, and to use the strip in any manner which may, may be necessary and appropriate for drainage uses. I, my disappointment is that, and, and this just fell into our lap, I was, oh, this is a great thing. My disappointment is this, someone's telling you, this ain't good enough for you. Well, that's what you have.
Well, they're not saying it's not good enough, they're saying it doesn't solve the problem potentially, right?
They're saying they don't solve, doesn't solve the problem.
Well, I think we need to get to the bottom of that, right?
I mean, it's not the same person that's telling you that it doesn't run the Phillips Pond when I showed you by this beats and bounds description. And if people are telling you that, they should be saying that in public forum.
Okay. Yeah, we'll invite them, as Alan said. So, yeah, so
I mean, that's only fair to that.
To, I'd completely agree.
And, I mean, there are other issues that we have in terms of, you know, there's stuff in there about taking out the agricultural rights, which total surprise to us. We thought we were going to be able to talk about the fact that, uh, changing the, 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 the access, you know, uh, for the ag reserve parcel, we were gonna be able to show you from engineering and other studies that the proposed changing the access doesn't work. I thought the whole idea was to be able to talk about that another day. So a lot of this stuff in here
That, that's true.
Yeah.
But it's not what it says right here. A lot of restrictions slipped into this that we just saw tonight that we didn't have a chance to comment on.
Understood.
That's not fair. That's not, you know, we should have a time to come to tables and negotiate that.
So we were like
Yeah.
And it also limits what we do on the property, what we grow. That's, we didn't even get to talk about that yet. But it got slipped in here, the restriction.
So I, you know, this was, like, again, ultimately, we're not blindsided by it, because we're agreeing to adjourn it, and we can talk about it.
Yeah, okay. Let's, let's, let's do that. Obviously, this needs some more discussion.
Thank you.
So, um, we'll, we'll adjourn this, um, the next
And Mr. Di, I know you're new to this, but I know you, like, Mr. McFarlane, you do have a law degree. I, I really enjoy the, the legal aspect of these discussions, and I, 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 it's not a challenge. If, if someone can demonstrate to me that there's some case, other than this case Mr. Borkwin is talking about, which allows me, which requires me to go to say, okay, I've got these permits, this permit has conditions, I, I have to let, you know, a staff member walk down there and, and, and make sure that I haven't violated the conditions, or somebody can tell me anything other than that in any case law in the states, because the, the state courts have dealt with this taking issue as well, or in any, any of the federal cases, I, 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 I welcome it from any, because, you know something? If someone can demonstrate that to us, then I'm gonna say to Rick, well, you're gonna have, you're gonna have to get that up. So it's not, you know, I just wanna, I, 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 I just wanna make sure that everybody, that this approval is not exacting, exact, extracting. It's called an exaction, something that the board doesn't have the power to do. And, and to a certain degree, you're being asked to fix a problem that is a public problem, and you're putting it on my client, and you're not supposed to do that any, anyway. And finally, again, I'll repeat that this, I don't know why the planning board is, is doing what should be a trustee problem. Take care of it. But anyway, thank you, thank you for doing that.
Um, so adjourn this to, our next meeting is the 20th. Uh, the meeting after that is the 3rd of June. I'm thinking of adjourning this to the 3rd.
That's fine.
Does that work?
That's acceptable. That's acceptable, yeah.
Yeah, so motion to, motion to, uh, adjourn this application to the June 3rd meeting.
Second.
Probably second.
Second, all in favor? All right, Di.
I just wanna say, Mr. Di, please don't do that as a challenge.
I don't view it as a challenge at all.
Help me, to help you, less to get to the right decision.
Your expression, your clients are just, that's fine, I agree with that. That's what you're supposed to do, and fine, that's fine.
But I'm also being very candid, if, if someone can demonstrate to me why this is not violative of the Fifth Amendment, show it to me, and then I'll have the discussion with my client alone. Thank you.
Um, okay. Uh, how about Boz Chu? Let's, let's go to Boz Chu.
David Gil Martin, Greenberg, 2317, Montauk, Highland Bridge, Hampton. Um, this is a continuation of your April 1st meeting, um, wherein you heard the application. Tonight, we hope to end the application and have a discussion either tonight or with the board about areas where we maybe can improve our site plan. I think the chair was getting at that last week, and we sort of got interrupted, um, with different issues. But we'd like to see it closed and then identify areas where you think you can make it stronger. I reviewed my notes of the hearing, and, and two things jump out at me, jump out at me, and I wanna be clear about them. One, at the end of this process, the covenant has to be changed. Those changes are what the discussion is about, but for all of the but for all of the benefits that we're able to provide for the neighbors, those have to be encapsulated in, in an amended covenant. Second of all, if the covenant isn't amended with a couple of things that we requested, there's really no point for Buzz Chu to go through with this. We're allowed to operate, spoken to the building inspector. There are no site plan issues at the site now, and we're clear. So I want to be clear that that covenant has to be changed. The second thing, and maybe a little bit more crass, is there's no open checkbook here. This isn't a revenue-neutral process. So I want the board, you know, to be reasonable, because there may come a point where Buzz Chu says, hey, this, this doesn't make financial sense for us. And you heard testimony from Mr. Chu about the actions that they've taken and the cost of those actions. So I'd also ask the board to keep that in mind. We're here to listen tonight, we're here to take the guidance of the board and go back and try and come back with a stronger plan. We'll listen, but again, I hope you close it tonight and then give us some guidance.
Questions? Any questions? So the covenant, just so I'm clear, the covenant that you need, that you're looking?
It's an existing covenant.
It says?
That, that governs the use of the property. For some of the proposals we've made, like the garbage restriction, making that later, the covenant has to be changed.
To what?
To, to the time restriction, to after ten, which is what we offered, after ten in the morning.
So do you have something for us to look at?
Not, not yet, because we, I don't think we've, we've focused or narrowed the issue to, to what the board wants to be changed.
So I think that we, we, you, you have to show us something, that, what you want to do, and then we can react to that, as opposed to us.
Understood. I think, I think, though, that that puts the cart before the horse. I think we have to agree on what the changes to the site plan are acceptable to the board. Then I can go back, amend the covenant, and, and give the board something to look at.
It's very difficult for us to design this, because there are two very important, with our jurisdiction, two very important things. We have to deal with businesses. So if a business says we're going to do X or Y, period, but it's no impact on why this dispute is, which is the neighbors, the side street and the back street, the neighbors are objecting. We've heard a number of them, we listened intently, they've sent videos. They, they, you have to plug them, it's hard, I'm not going to computer. There's all sorts of stuff. And if, if, if you want us to bless a deal because of our jurisdiction and that, and say, as a planning matter, tell us what it is, but we can't, we're not, we're not, we can't create it.
I know, I understood, but there's, there's no deal here. Let's be clear, we're not making a deal with anybody. We have an application in front of the planning board to amend our site plan. That's what we're asking to do. Do, do you agree?
Give us the amendments.
Do you agree with the amendments? They're in front of you, I presented them. I've been here at a work session, and I've presented them April first, so I can run through them again.
That would be helpful.
In, in the Dropbox, there are, Mr. Gil Martin did, did provide.
But it'd be helpful to hear it from.
Absolutely.
Mr. Gil Martin.
Okay. That's great. If this is, if this is what, I guess what Donald Trump would call a taken or leave-in proposition, all right, we'll tell, we'll, we'll do that. And then we'll get testimony about costs and everything else that the neighbors object to.
This is a process, right? And we're engaging in the process, Mr. McFarland. And, and that process involves us telling you what the changes are. We've done it twice, happy to do it again.
It's always subject to change, even Mr. Chu said, okay, tell us what it is.
And that's why we're here.
Okay.
Okay.
So since there has been some back and forth, it'd be helpful if, if you just restated your client's, the applicant's position on what they would like to do here.
Okay, so we, to, one of the concerns of the neighbors were that there were trucks coming into the back of the property. On this plan, we've proposed, and you can see the cones here, which would block access to the back of the property. Our garbage has been, the dumpster is here. And the current covenant allows us to gain access to the property with our trucking company, beginning at eight in the morning. We've proposed to move that to ten in the morning. With the understanding that everything has to be done by six.
Ten, to deal with the dumpster.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, number two, three.
We have asked for electric charging stations, which are located here and here, to service Buzz Chu-related cars. It's not open to the public, which we understand is an issue from the Tesla application.
But, so, so those are pre-existing?
Yeah, you bet.
So those are pre-existing charging stations, or you're moving them?
They, they exist today, we're asking for site plan approval.
Approval, they get approved.
No, they're, they're, they're there, we're looking for approval, and we're not moving them.
Got it.
In, in the spot that they are on the.
And, and point out to me, please, where they are today?
Right here.
They're over there, okay. Got it, okay.
Thank you. Four.
Four, we are asking that we have the ability to have parts delivery in the front Port Cocheare area, where we'd have a van or the truck that brings them in, come in and drop them off before eight o'clock.
It happens now, but you want to change the location and the timing.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gil Martin, is it before eight o'clock?
Yes, we'd like to.
Eight AM, okay.
So can you just point out to us where they'd enter and where they'd leave it?
The, the truck would come in here.
Yep.
Come through here.
Yep, and drop it. And drop it right there.
So it, the building blocks.
Yep.
Hopefully, in the mornings.
Mr. Chu had dealt with the issues and the logistics at length, and he wants to, before eight o'clock? Because of the logistics and the result of the spot, he picked a new spot, they will always go.
Yes, that's the, the Port Cocheare there. And, and then finally, we created an area where disabled cars would be brought to the site. There were six in this area. The neighbors asked that we reduce that to three, and that's, that's perfectly fine. We get mostly one at a time, so having three is, is enough.
So just.
That was both the number and the location they have to, as I remember, they go to.
Right, right. We, we would, we would identify those as the place where they would be.
So three spots on the right side of the plan there, for after hours.
At least three instead of six. And they'd be closer to the, closer to the.
And how would the tow truck drop those off?
Carefully, I guess.
Yeah, no, where would they, where would they enter, and sort of what's the traffic pattern?
I, I assume they have to come in like this, and then, and then drop them there. But we can sort of work on a circulation plan. I think that's going to be part of what you're going to ask me to do, so we'll figure out how that can be accomplished.
Because you know where we're.
It's a beeper.
Yeah, it's the backup alarm.
Yeah, I mean, that's New York State law now, so.
Yeah.
So are all of these things already outlined on, what's the last revised date you have there? Are they outlined on that map, that's what?
That's fine.
And it's the only map that we.
That's fine.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah, just, just one second, Amanda, and that, that, those are all the points, correct?
Let me just make sure. Yes, those are the.
Okay. Amanda?
Yes.
You have the floor.
Mr. Gil Martin, if you could reiterate, the ability to have the parts delivery before eight AM in front, in the front of the property, can you, can you explain since it's a delivery? What, how does that change what was happening before? Will these parts be delivered further from the neighbors, closer? If you could just clarify.
So there's a, there's a restriction that any deliveries happen after eight AM. The parts come from Pennsylvania, and there's an issues, an issue that's arising where the parts can't be delivered. If they're delivered after eight, the driver times out on the way home, has to pull over, and so they have been unable to deliver the parts. Currently, the parts are delivered to Riverhead, where a space is rented, they've hired a van to bring the parts over. So that's, that's the background of that request. And the, the parts are, are delivered, I believe, today to the Port Cocheare, but anytime after eight o'clock, they could be brought behind the building to where the service area and parts area are. If we're able to do it earlier, we can have them drop.
Got it.
Drop there.
Okay.
So earlier would not go closer to the neighbors, after ten would be closer to the neighbors?
Yeah, yeah, Ms. Holman, I'm not, I'm not positive about the answer to that, because I would, I, I don't know where they get delivered currently. But, but I know that the parts and service area are in the rear of the building, closer to the neighbors.
And then, were there some landscaping questions, issues here that I seem to recall?
There's, there's none that, that we present. I mean, the landscaping issues are, and you have a report from Aris Design, where the intrusion of the neighboring condominium association has choked out the landscape plan that this board had a different composition many years ago.
But, Hank, please, go ahead.
It, it choked them out, and, and you have the proof of that. They've been taken out now.
Understood.
So, so we have a, we have a landscape architect who's watching to see how they.
Understood, but as part of your plan, there's nothing in there about landscaping at this point?
No, at this point, yeah.
Five-point plan, okay.
At this point, no.
That's good. Any questions on, for Mr. Gil Martin on this? No, no questions?
I'll leave this here for you.
Just quickly, and apologies if I missed in the Dropbox. Have you presented a draft covenants and restrictions, a draft amended covenants and restrictions?
No, because I don't know what, what we're changing, or, or how. I'm happy to do it if we get to that point.
Got it. So I'm assuming there are neighbors here? Yep. And I want to give you a chance to, because we're still on a public hearing on this, right?
Correct, we have not closed the public hearing on this one.
So want to give you a chance to respond to those five points? If there's something that you disagree with on those five points? And, and I'm assuming we'll hear about your landscaping plan, too.
Mark, do you want timing, or?
Yeah, oh yeah, please, go ahead. Do you want to talk, sorry, before you start, do you want to talk about the timing?
So as per our last public hearing, and as is generally our procedure, we are going to limit public comments to three minutes per person. I'd ask us there all to be mindful that we have had public comment in the past, so if anyone is a repeat client, to keep things brief and to not include cumulative evidence. And with that, I will yield the floor, three minutes.
Good evening. John Scagnelli, Eight Carriage Lane. I'm a member of the forty-seven home HOA Association that opposes any changes to the, to the covenants and restrictions. I think a lot of what's been said, we would take issue with. The cones do not work. That is evidenced by calls in the police blotter. There are outstanding violations, as I understand it, from, from various things that we're trying to correct here. There's.
That's not true. Roberts rules of evidence, when there's a misstatement, allows me to judge. They give any complaints or any violations on the property next door, and they've been resolved.
Understood. Sorry.
That's okay. The noise is intolerable. It's not about landscaping and making the place look pretty. That landscaping buffer, as was first approved twenty years ago, provided not only a line of sight, but also a noise-abatement buffer. It's completely degraded. I think there's mutual culpability here. I don't take a position where it's only the other person's problem. We've offered many times to sit down at the table, as recently as only in the last couple of weeks, and say, "Let's talk through this thing and see what we come up with." It's a money issue. It's going to take money to enhance that landscape top buffer. It's going to take money to have a sound engineer come up with a proposal that will do a proper sound attenuation study that will tell us what's acceptable and what's not acceptable. At, at the end of the day, we, we just, I don't want to repeat what we've already given to you in writing, giving to you in verbal comments. I, I think you've got it, and you understand, I know Deborah, Amanda, others. Mark, you've asked questions at the, at the last public hearing about some of those very same things. So to me, it's common sense, so I'll just leave it at that, and thank you for your time and attention.
Christopher Borysh, Twenty-one Menno Grass Lane, Southampton, New York. I'll correct the record for Mr. Gil Martin. He gave me four docket numbers for charges at a local court, where he's defending Buzz Chu. That's number one. On the covenant, we don't want any change to eight AM to six PM, and we want Sunday to be off limits. The charging stations should be looked into if, under his telling testimony, there was no approval for. So I don't know why you would expand on something that wasn't approved in the first place. Before I forget. The covenant specifically says eight AM to six PM. This is a, a backdoor attempt to change auto parts deliveries that are not allowed. You can get auto parts deliveries from Amazon, I get them from my own car. You don't have to rely on one service or one truck driver. It's a good idea for business, because it saves money, but it shouldn't, shouldn't impact forty-seven houses over one issue. I think the last thing is, we'd like to replace the cones with bollards that pull up out of the ground. Sorry about that. That, you know, are more, are more secure and can be locked in place. That's what we're looking for. Because any truck driver can pull in there, move a cone, and deliver things and make noise. Thank you.
My name's Lori Enright, and I live at sixteen Menno Grass Lane. And this is very emotional for me, because Buzz Chu goes home at the end of the day. Lives in Kachak. The noise. It's devastating. No homeowners, no homeowners should have to live with that. You can walk up here with, with your plans, and it looks nice on paper, and those three spots, they're right behind our bedrooms. Just this past week alone, we were awakened. I called the police, because I thought I heard movement back there, I heard, heard trucks. And then a loudspeaker goes off now, warning the intruders. All I can say is that we have a moral responsibility for our neighbors, and no one should have the right, just because they're successful, to do whatever they want to do. It's in the covenants and restrictions that they should maintain that berm that shouldn't even be a question. We shouldn't be looking at the highway. I can't sit in my backyard anymore, peaceful, my neighbors can't, along that strip. So no matter what is presented to you there on that piece of paper, it's affecting our lives, our sleep, not just me, but many of my neighbors. So I'm hoping that even beyond what they're asking, which I would love to say, sure, go ahead, but historically, they have never been good neighbors. I've had Brian Chu to my house. I showed him seven years ago, please do something with the berm, please. And he said he would, and he never did. So all I know is that everything can be written out on paper, but the bottom line is that we're right behind that dumpster. The crashing sound, our house, our houses shake. It's just been devastating, and not for one or two or three years, but I've been at this since two thousand seventeen. I've been writing letters to our board. I don't know what you can do, but it has to go beyond just what they're asking. And I hope that, that either the trustees or this board can help us to ensure that Buzz Chu does bring that berm back to what was originally stated in the CNR. I'm sorry I'm emotional, but it's been devastating for us, devastating, I cannot tell you. My poor son has seen me go from this peaceful zen mom to a basket case, because I'm not getting sleep, because I get awakened at three thirty. My poor son has seen me go from this peaceful zen mom to a basket case, because I'm not getting sleep, because I get awakened at three thirty in the morning. Even last last week, twice. I think I sent you a couple of videos. So it goes beyond just what they're asking. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, any other comments?
Hi, Shawna Byrne, twenty-five Menno Grass Lane, Southampton, New York. Um, I have been a member of the HOA since nineteen ninety-eight. I understand that Buzz Chu is a business, and they are entitled to conduct their business. However, there has to be some sort of a happy medium, so that everyone can coexist peacefully. This is quality of life at this point. I've heard it at three o'clock in the morning. I've heard the loudspeaker go off, intruder. Am I a light sleeper? I don't like to think that, but maybe. Um, but again, how would you feel, any of you feel, if you were awakened at three o'clock in the morning with any of these issues? In terms of the berm, the berm has to be addressed. We're not saying that Buzz has to take care of all of it. We're willing, ready, and able, as a community, there's forty-seven homes, we know that there's going to have to be money spent. We get that. But what I don't understand is why we're changing a C C N R, covenants, conditions, and restriction. When for the last, is it twenty-four years? I think it is. Um, there's been just blatant violations left, right, and center. And it's been demonstrated time and again that there are violations, and it just continues, and it continues, and it continues. I'm a homeowner. I'm entitled to quiet enjoyment, which means I should be able to sleep throughout the night. Loreen's up here crying, because she's impacted, and and this this has been going on for years, years and years and years. Again, we would like to coexist peacefully. I think that we can come to a resolution. I do think that we can coexist peacefully, but there's got to be some give and take, and that's all we're asking for. And that's, thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
I think if Mr. Gil Martin is going to create the covenant control restriction change, he should provide you with the original, okay? So you can see the before and after. Cause then that will help us the next time we commit. You'll be able to point to, obviously, times easy, eight AM to six PM. You'll see Sunday is, you know, off the table, okay? If he's going to add Sunday, and he's going to add Saturday, then you'll know what's up, okay?
Anyone else? Comments, questions from the board? Oh, sorry.
In no particular order. The covenant was submitted as part of the original application, so it's in the file. The berm, I'm not sure what this, the talk of the degradation of the berm is. The the berm is as it was when it was approved. Chris Talbot inspected the property and said that we were in compliance with the site plan. I understand that there are these individual truck drivers that may come in and create noise. We, you know, as you heard Brian Chu tell you, that he's done everything within his power to um, to stop that from happening and advising people. The, I guess, I, you know, I don't want to get into all of it. Um, and again, we're happy to try and work through this process and come up with solutions. But, you know, we did enhance the landscaping behind the berm and behind the fence in a significant way. And, you know, a a reasonable plan through this board, um, we would not have issue with. But we'd ask you to close the hearing, and then we'll try our best to work through the issues.
The building inspector has done an investigation recently?
I would call it an inspection, and it's within the last two months.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. No comments, no questions? I'm not inclined to close the hearing, right?
So, well, we are free to do so, but but to keep in mind is that if we close a public hearing, our sixty-two day clock to make a decision begins running from the close of hearing. So if we leave it open, then Mr. Gil Martin will have a chance. You can provide me with your proposed amended covenants and restrictions. I can review that. I can review the site plan, and um, we can discuss that at the the very next meeting, if you'd like.
Right, cause I'm not inclined, I'm not inclined to start that clock ticking, because we should not, you know, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We we can be flexible with the time period, right? But but the public hearing is is to hear from the public. We've been through this twice. And I think the issues, you know, should be narrowed enough to close the hearing and get to work on them. I I don't understand what what the sense would be or the purpose to come back and and just do what we did tonight and April first all over again.
Uh, we're not going to do that again. And there's no desire to do that. I mean, we've heard both sides. The issues haven't changed uh in any of the last two meetings where this has come up. But it seems as if, uh, to, at least from my perspective, that it's being dropped in our lap to negotiate a solution here. And I don't think that's the role of the planning board, to negotiate a solution between a business and the neighbors. I think you guys have to work this out, and then bring something to us to consider. Is that fair, John?
At the risk of being quarrelsome, though, we made an application to you.
Yep.
To make these changes. There's no negotiation, right? We've made this application. You'll tell us the areas of concern. We'll look to change the plan. To satisfy those areas of concern, and try and work that process through. If we get to a point where um, we can't agree, where the board doesn't agree with what we're able to do, then we'll deal with that at that point. But this is an application that we've presented to you. We're the applicant, you're the board.
Understood. Did you have a comment?
I I would, I I read it. I was underinformed with all the hearings, with the videos and all that sort of stuff. My information load is way up. We do not have, I do not think I have the power to 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 deal with your application in the abstract, because. It doesn't solve, it doesn't appear to solve satisfactorily all the issues.
Well, tell us where we where we've come up short.
Well, the issue, you just you just heard the complaints about ours. I didn't even know Sunday was an issue.
Sunday's not an issue. It's precluded in in the covenant.
I took notes, which are not exact. I have, I want to go back. I'll get Alex to re-review the file and see what what your five-plus points are. In in writing, I assume it's identical, but you'll see, and I do want to talk to the building inspector. He's made it. He's a knowledgeable guy. He's made an investigation, which you. You you talked about finance. You told us this was a big issue. You charged us with finance for Mr. Chu and the neighbor. I got to understand the the budget, what what's involved. They they may say it's trivial. He may say it's it's material. I I want to understand the budget.
Well, then then we need some guidance to get to a budget. What are you requiring in it, and then we can tell you. Do you want a twenty-foot wall between Buzz Chu and the neighbors? I don't think that that's a possibility financially.
If I may, I think just to put things into perspective, and and board members, if if anything that I'm expressing is where you are finding confusion, let me know. So we've heard from the public, and we've heard from applicant, that there have been issues on this on this site in the past. And Mr. Gil Martin um went through, I think it was four, maybe five, seven, six bullet points, which I've I've recorded here. Um, and which are noted on the map, which are intended to alleviate these conditions, moving delivery away from the border of the property with the residential area. Restructuring where deliveries of parts can be made. Um, this board is within its power to recommend or to ask for conditions on a site plan, if they so see fit, and if they think that it will further a legitimate purpose of zoning. I will caution that that needs to be reasonable conditions directly related and incidental to the purpose of the site plan. Um, but we need to really articulate, if there are still things outstanding, what we want to see.
Understood. Debbie, do you have any um, comments on the five points that Mr. Gil Martin, is sort of five-point site plan?
What I'm wondering as a person, and maybe not as a member of the board, is is the homeowners' association. Is the homeowners' association offering anything to mitigate some of the concerns between the two?
I'm not sure if that's a appropriate question to ask a non-applicant.
That's why I prefaced it. So I, so I guess I feel, I feel like we're we're in the position of of uh, mediating a dispute. Is not ours, and I know that you're telling me that we're restricted here, but but I wonder. For example, moving the parts delivery to before eight AM. What is, what is the, what is the argument in favor of doing that? I understand it's inconvenient for the business, but.
It it is a convenience and an operational request. That's the basis of the request.
So, yeah, I I mean, I I understand where you're coming from. If if there are no specific questions, Bill, I don't want to throw you in the deep end here on your first night. Okay, and Amanda, do you do you have anything you need clarification on?
I do, because there's been a significant amount of conversation about reinforcing the noise site nuisance barrier between them. Like a fence or wall with landscaping and those sort of things. And that does sound like something that the two sides, Buzz Chu and the homeowners. Some homeowners' association, we talked about these different things, and that may be both of you contributing. That seems a separate thing outside of our scope. We we agree that that sounds like a great place to start. The success of that border, I shouldn't say border, the wall or barrier, the success of that barrier being negotiated and implemented, and you're getting started. Directly affects our decision of whether we should allow the cones, or they should be something more, get the trucks to go back there. I mean, it all depends on what's going on, and right now, it sounds like there's a very ineffective barrier, and people are suffering. So I think it's sort of the horse, the cart leading the horse. I don't feel that we can make good decisions without your two sides coming together. And talking a little bit more about, is it financially feasible for you to make that a better sound noise reduction? Then we can talk more about deliveries. We can talk about blocking with the cones versus the metal bars, which would stop it anyway. Someone being able to move a cone. So there's a lot of issues here, but I feel that we haven't really advanced in any significant way on substance to understand them any any better than the last time.
Well, again, this is a public hearing process. We're the applicant. We've put an application before you. I outlined the five changes that we would like to see to the site plan. If you have, through your planners, very capable people, other suggestions on the way that we can deal with it, that's how the process works. Introducing a third-party negotiation is outside of this process. I'm happy to talk to the neighbors. But the process is, we made an application to you. You review it, you evaluate it, and say, hey, Buzz Chu, you came up short here. Uh, we'd like to see something more serious than the cones. Come back with something else. But but bring those suggestions forward. We'll evaluate them. We will propose the changes, and you'll tell us whether they're acceptable or not.
Yep, maybe I can help.
That's the process.
Maybe I can help on this. Um, and let's just go through your five points. Uh, on the trucks coming in and the bollards versus cones, I understand both sides of the argument there, right? The bollards are certainly prevent a truck driver from moving the cons. On the other hand, it also prevents, uh, because I think the the security issues, right? And I appreciate the security issues, because they're they're real issues out here um, these days with automobiles. So uh, that's that's a tough one. I understand, I hear and see both sides of that one, right?
Quickly, I I've talked to Mr. Chu about it, and I think we can come up with something more permanent.
That still allows security concerns to be addressed.
We think so.
That would be good. On the dumpster at ten AM, I I personally, I'm speaking as an individual board member here. I'm not representing views of 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 my fellow board members, but a ten AM dumpster pickup sounds perfectly fine to me, right? That's seems completely reasonable.
That's, it's an eight o'clock now, so moving it back two hours.
Understood, right? And I know that makes noise, but, you know, trash gets picked up everywhere, um, and it's just something we have to deal with. On the charging stations, um, I I personally do not see a problem with the charging stations uh for Buzz Chu's use being located on that side of the property. And I don't understand um, why that would cause a noise issue for anyone. On the parts delivery, um, you you know, if they're just pulling up at front, and they're driving through, so there's no backup alarm going. Again, I I do not understand why that's going to cause a lot of. So they're dropping the lift gate. Okay. Right, so I I, yeah.
Are you sure that was at our property? Cause cause he's been, they're delivered to Riverhead now and brought in after. So if you're hearing a gate, and this has happened quite a bit, is that we're accused of creating the noise. And then it's across the street on thirty-nine.
So, uh, time out, please. Um, so if that lift gate is actually happening at Buzz Chu, I I totally understand that, but it's not clear that it is. Um, so I also appreciate, I I appreciate that, but let me ask you a question. If they're doing parts deliveries, right, and they're dropping a lift gate, is it possible to limit the time that they do that, right? So it's not three AM or two AM or five AM in the morning, right?
Well, we'll look at the lift gate, and and we can prohibit a lift gate. I understand that. I understand the crashing of that, so we can prohibit that type of delivery.
And then the last thing on the after-hours delivery, look, Buzz Chu needs to be able to operate his business.
It's only, it's only the one delivery period that we're looking for, for the parts into the front.
Yeah, understood.
The rest of it, the car carriers and all the other stuff, we'll.
I get, I get that. I'm talking about the after-hours drop-off.
The cars.
The cars. Look, you've got to be able to run your business. A big part of that is after-hours drop-off. I personally had this problem this weekend, so um, I understand it. If you can find a way to manage those backup alarms on that, right? Or find some solution, but, you know, two AM in the morning, a tow truck with the beep beep beep, it it, you know, that's that's not. I I understand where you all are coming from on that one, okay? And then on the landscaping issue, look, I think this is a really tough one, and I, this is another thing that I have a fair amount of experience with. Landscaping, stockade, fences, do not knock down a lot of noise, right? So spending a lot of mo- time, money, uh, acoustical consultants on trying to come up with some answer to that. In my personal opinion, is a waste of everyone's time and money, because there's not a cost-effective solution to that, right? Um, and I've been down this path before personally. So um, I I think that's something where people are going to have to get together and figure out, if you want better landscaping, you guys have to talk about what it is, right? And it it, in my mind, right? It should be balanced by cost for both parties, and both parties should bear some responsibility on this. Um, and it should be a um, reasonable approach, right? Not hiring a lot of acoustical consultants, because I think that's just going to drive the expense up, and you're really not going to get a solution out of those folks. That's going to be cost-effective for both parties. So that one is really in your court, okay? It's not part of your site plan, right? But if, you know, if you want us to consider. But if, you know, if, if you want us to consider landscaping as part of this, then you got to come back to us, both sides with a proposal, right? We're not going to arbitrate that. Okay?
Okay, I, I disagree with that last statement. I think it's actually your job to provide opportunities to mitigate what has been brought up as issues through this process. You're not arbitrating.
I, I don't, my personal view is there is no solution, no landscape or fencing solution that is going to solve the noise problem, right? There isn't one.
Just, just to put everything to perspective yet again, um, Mr. Mc, Mr. London, you hit the nail on the head with the phrase reasonable conditions. Um, and the ball is in our court to the extent that the planning board is allowed to pursue into their approval, suggest or require reasonable conditions rationally related to a zoning purpose to a site plan to mitigate effects, so.
I think we've given you now some clear feedback. The last thing that I heard for the first time tonight was the intruder alert?
Yeah, I, I texted Mr. Chu and he said there's no outdoor announcement or PA facilities there. It's all indoors. So I'm not sure if it's, if it's emanating from another property.
So if someone's inside the building and someone's broken in, then an alarm would go off, right? Or there would be some, some, but if there's motion anywhere outside, it's not coming from Buzz Chu is your client's position.
I can refocus and with him, it was just a quick text while, when that issue came up, but there's no outdoor.
Because if that's the case, I mean, look, if there's a burglar alarm because somebody's broken in, that's one thing. But if it's every time.
Something if somebody walks in.
If somebody's walking through or something happens or a deer runs across the parking lot, that's obnoxious, I agree. Yeah, but we cannot tell from that recording where that's coming from. So I appreciate you have a recording, but we don't know where it's coming from. We just hear something in the background, okay?
Something that I would like to put on the board's radar is that, looking at this subdivision, there are lots within this subdivision that are less than a hundred feet from commercial buildings on David White's Lane, um, that are only 115 feet away from railroad tracks. So it would be difficult, if not impossible, and probably reckless of this board to attribute all of the noise complaints to one business in the area.
We're not, yeah, we're not here to attribute, you know, blame. And that, we're here to, and I think we've given you pretty clear feedback on your five points and on the landscaping things, you know, we encourage you to come together on that one and a cost-effective for both parties, realizing that knocking down noise with landscaping and, and fencing is, is a difficult endeavor. Yes, sir.
Sir, you have to, you have to be at the.
I wanted to just forget to address two things Mr. Gil Martin said, and you.
Mr. Bre, uh, just, sorry, I'm going to give you one minute because we're trying to keep things.
I'll keep 30 seconds, 10 seconds. Bollards increase security, they don't reduce security. That's, that's the most important thing. And then, um, please get a copy of the disposition on the charges against Buzz Chu by code enforcement and the building inspector at your local village court. And that would be a, you could predict what future behavior by the dealership would be like, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Quick comment on the landscaping. Um, 20 years ago, the community opposed uh the covenants that were put in place as a condition.
And putting those covenants in place, one of those conditions was a planting of 1,500 and change plants that in essence would deal with the noise abatement issue. I don't know why a board would have approved and mandated that condition back then and yet, hey, it doesn't seem to have any, any effect. So I, I would just want to leave that thought, that's it.
Look, I think, I, I can't speak for the board back then, but um I, I am president of the homeowners association as well. You know, we deal with these issues all the time and I have 15 years of experience on this one, right? We're not saying that um there shouldn't be landscaping there because it does help, but it's certainly not going to, um, i- if somebody's dropping a lift gate at two AM in the morning, landscaping or stockade fence isn't going to do anything.
Which is all the more reason why we shouldn't contemplate adjusting those covenants one iota because there are all restrictions now and they're still, they still violate those requirements.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Um, so I think that's fairly clear direction to the parties here, right? And kind of summarizes, at least at a high level, where the planning board stands unless. Unless anyone disagrees with anything I said.
And just, I know we haven't. Remember tonight, just to give a very high level um discussion, any, any discussion of code violations is not germane to this board.
Correct. All right, so I'm going to adjourn this. I, um, I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I'm going to adjourn this to the next meeting, all right? Actually, I'm going to adjourn it to June, the June 3rd meeting, right? I think it is. Yeah, sorry.
Mr. Gil Martin, can you confirm how often the parts delivery occurs?
It's every day.
Yeah.
Every weekday?
Could be Saturdays too.
Yeah, we're allowed, it allows to be delivered on Saturdays. Sundays, there are no deliveries permitted.
Right. Um, I, I want to make a motion to adjourn this to our, the first meeting in June.
And we may have to reschedule that meeting, the May meeting.
You're right.
Yeah, okay. Um, motion to adjourn this application to, um, let me just check the date, June 3rd.
Mr. Gil Martin, if you want to get draft covenants restrictions over to me to review so that I can discuss them with the board, I'd be glad to.
Mr. Borckman, I can't draft covenants without a full understanding of what it's going to be in the covenant, how it's going to change.
Well, I see we have like the five points that we can at least begin with.
I, I suspect that the resolution, if there is one out there, is on the landscaping. I mean, otherwise.
Well, I think you've got to come back to us on the bollards versus cones. I think you've got to come back to us um on the uh, the delivery, uh, the deliveries. And I think you've got to come back to us on the after-hours drop-off of disabled vehicles and just how you intend to manage that. And, and with that, some clarification there, I think then we can close the public because, you know, then we'll have some closure in boxing this.
Generally after you've heard the public that you get into those issues, but we'll do it your way.
Yeah. So motion to adjourn to June 3rd, please. Second?
So move.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, everyone. North Main Street. You've been waiting patiently.
And just as a matter of housekeeping, I do have the applicant's mailing and posting affidavits here. Um, they are all in order, board has jurisdiction.
This is our flag lot.
Do you name board members on Liz Vale with the law firm Greenberg Power located at 2317 Bridge, Martha Farway Bridge Hampton. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, North Main LLC. I do have some exhibits that I'll refer to um for the board's consideration. I do.
So I was here, yes. I was here on April 1st and I'm back. This is a public hearing to consider the proposed minor two-lot subdivision located at 54 North Main Street. It's the properties comprised of 1.67 acres or 72,740 square feet. It's in the R, it's in a split zone, R20 and R7.5 zoning districts. The existing 5,300 square foot front office building on proposed lot two is located in the R20 zoning district with the zoning district line running along the back of the office separating out the back property, which is improved with a pre-existing non-conforming wood shop. And that's zoned R7.5 zoning. So, and that's proposed lot one. So proposed lot one, we're proposing is comprised of 34,960 square feet, well over the 7,500 square foot requirement. And proposed front lot two is 37,780 square feet, again, over the 20,000 square foot requirement. We did submit a yield map to this board evidencing that this could be a four-lot subdivision, but we're seeking a reduced density two-lot subdivision instead. As this board's aware, we first submitted our application and obtained sketch plan approval from this board in December of 2020. A negative declaration was adopted by this board in September 8th, 2020. The sketch plan approval did prefer a flag lot rather than an easement and directed the applicant to go to ZBA. The ZBA reviewed our application over a 10-month period and ultimately refused to approve the preferred flag lot plan, making us withdraw that plan and resubmit the easement plan. We received a determination granting variances in connection with the easement plan in April of 2022. Um, so now we're back and we've submitted a sketch plan for this board's review for the easement plan because that's what the ZBA authorized us to proceed with. Um, we've been pending before the South County Department of Health Services, just so that you're aware, for approximately two years. Um, we have been diligently pursuing this application the entire time, even though it's been almost a four-year period from when we started. And so that's where we are right now. I think the big issue before the board is easement versus flag. And as I stated last time, that's really a distinction without a difference. The access to this site has existed in its current configuration since at least 1960. And I've submitted aerials that show the access in its current configuration, which is what we're proposing since 1976, without issue, without impacting neighbors, without issue. And so we're asking to just continue the same access. We have also had the access approved by the village fire marshal, which was part of a zoning board of appeals condition. So it's been determined to be adequate and safe for access to the second lot in the back. Um, so for those purposes, we're seeking to allow for the easement over the flag.
Yeah. Is the fire marshal's approval in the file?
Uh, it should be, yeah, he stamped the plan and everything.
Is it, is it on the?
And he wrote emails and memo, he wrote a memo, which was submitted to the zoning board of appeals.
We can look at the Dropbox.
Yeah.
Did you submit that additionally with this new plan?
No.
Sketch plan?
I didn't, it's just part of your record, so I thought. It was something that the zoning board of appeals asked us to actually reach out to the fire marshal and get before they acted, which we did.
Yep.
So one of the issues that came up last time I was here was, um, you know, there's an, there's a recommendation in your comprehensive plan um on page 33 and I think in the 90s, which states that um it discourages flag lots, but that discouragement is for lots that are less than the minimum size, lot size permitted in the zoning district. So I think that rationale, when applied here, does not apply at all because we are proposing a lot that's four times the size that's permitted in that zoning district. Um, additionally, those recommendations and comp plans are just that, the recommendations. Until a village board of trustees legislates to codify a recommendation, this board must be guided by the actual village code, which allows subdivisions, flag lots and access by easement. The planning board has no authority to legislate comprehensive plan regulate, recommendations into rules of law and apply new standards to current applications. Um, if you, and here I'd point to New York State Village Law Section 7-71813 Rules and Regulations, which states the planning board may recommend to a village board of trustees regulations relating to any subject matter over which the board has jurisdiction. But adoption of so, of any such recommendations shall be by the village board of trustees and be by local law. Um, so indeed, the comprehensive plan recommends many changes, which if not codified, will not apply to any applicants in the village. For example, the plan recommends that the village consider rezoning R80 zone lots um along the ocean such as Meadow Lane and upzoning those to R120. Zoning, it says that zoning should grandfather lots created before the zoning was changed. Um, and this is on the comprehensive plan, page 95. Unless the village board acts to change the zoning laws and upzone the R80 properties to R120 to reflect those recommendations, they simply do not apply. Many comprehensive plan recommendations actually never get acted upon and put into law. A village board must weigh the impacts of such recommendations on their village and consider public input prior to enacting changes pursuant to New York State Village Law and municipal home rule law. Therefore, this board must actually follow the existing law and precedent. So I've, I've given you some exhibits as well, uh, obviously the prior approvals. And I have a situation where I'm in a really difficult spot because I have one approval from your board and a different approval from the zoning board of appeals. But I am asking um that this board approve the sketch plan that's before you today. I've also given you examples of precedent setting um flag lot approvals in the village and prior subdivisions that have been approved with flag lots and access easement entries as well.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions?
Any questions?
Did you just, you say you gave us a list of easements in, in modern terms?
I gave you a list of prior subdivision approvals where.
Use of easements as opposed to flag lots?
I've given you a list of prior subdivision approvals that created flag lots. And I've certainly highlighted on the, the village zoning map, all lots that appear to have been given access by easement as well. They're in there, yeah.
That's good research.
Any questions, Debbie? Bill?
No.
Amanda, any questions?
No.
Okay.
We did hear from some neighbors, um, and obviously they're in support of creating a residential use in the back of this parcel. The back parcel is improved for the pre-existing non-conforming wood shop, which would be changed to a conforming residential use. And the back lot proposed is surrounded by residential properties. So that would be something that would be more in keeping with the character of this community and it would benefit the village.
Yeah. Um, thank you. And um, look, I, I think we're sympathetic. Um, the planning board approval uh that you got in 2020 was for access by easement, right? Uh, and then you went to the, no, the other way around, access by.
It was by flag lot.
By flag lot, right. But, but the flag pole was.
The zoning board in its wisdom has changed it.
They made me withdraw my application for the flag and resubmit the easement application.
The zoning board changed it.
They changed it, they refused to approve the flag.
And it's, it, it, to me, it's very simple. With the zoning board, with a view and the planning board, currently, I think, with a really strong view of it, if in doubt, this is a, this property was extended, so it really goes to the south edge. In the history of the property, it was an extension. It's, it's bigger on the, if you look at it on the right to the south, it's really narrow. Because they, they gave you two. He said it would, it would affect, I think, the pyramid structure too near to the structure.
If we put the flag, it was too close to the building, that's what they said.
Too close to the building to do a flag, so there's a conflict.
Well, the problem is, I mean, that, that's why I say it's a distinction without a difference because frankly, the access there has been there since 1976. So you're actually not creating a new access, it's existing.
I know.
It's right here and it's been here exactly as it's shown since 1976.
Understood. So.
It's a distinction without a difference.
You, you could, you could have done a flag lot until about 20 years ago. Because the building got extended, so it was very near, so it gave the zoning board an excuse to create the conflict.
So a couple of things. Um, one, the planning board for any flag lot site plan that we're approving is looking for deeded access to access that flag lot.
Well, easements are recorded against the deed.
As directed.
Yeah.
So that's number one.
So that can be provided.
Okay. Number two, on, on your site plan, we'd like to see the building placement where that's going to be, right? Because we don't really understand where the, where the house.
Oh, you want to see the, um, the building footprint for a house.
Correct.
Okay.
Right? The building envelope, thank you, thank you. There's a concern that um because the front property is still a commercial property and there is a parking lot in the rear of the building, that you've got a commercial driveway there that's also shared by a residential house. Did I articulate that correctly, Alex?
Yeah, there would be a common driveway easement required by this board as a condition of approval. That would also be restrictive conditions in that common driveway easement to ensure everyone had safe and adequate access.
Yeah.
For both sites.
But when that happens, my understanding is that that's supposed to be a 25-foot wide driveway.
Well, actually, that's one of the variances we got.
Which is expired.
For frontage.
No variance.
I'm sorry, you're right.
It's not expired at all. And the front parking lot obviously has frontage on North Main. So, yeah, we have a variance for access.
Yeah, okay. I misspoke on that one. Um, so th- those are some of the things we're looking for.
Because it's actually supposed to be 18 feet wide at a certain point as well. So it is here, but we got a variance because it wasn't 18 feet wide the entire way through too. That was one of the requested variances.
Yeah.
But this is going to be by an easement, a common driveway easement. So it would be something that would be approved by this board. The restrictions would be something I would negotiate with council and we would make sure it was as wide as necessary, as needed to be.
You mean, the residential owners would have easement across the commercial property to access their property?
Yeah, yeah.
That's not what we like, right? It is, we like deeded access.
That's right.
Yeah, so I did speak, say that correctly. We want deeded-
Well, it's an easement that runs with the land.
I'm confused, so with the concept-
Yeah.
I'm a little confused, because what, what can be done is a flag lot, which would be a part of the back lot, for lack of better terms, a residential lot. But an easement would be recorded. Mrs. Vale is correct that easements are recorded in the deed book in the county clerk against the deed.
They run with the land.
And the easement would say that this is subject to the ingress and egress rights of the front lot.
Correct.
So it would be shared, even though it would be the property of the back lot.
Correct. But that is, is that the way it's proposed?
Yeah, it would be a common driveway easement for the entire, just like every other.
He's asking who would own the strip. He's asking if the residential property would own the strip.
They would not own the strip, because the ZBA said no.
Yeah, because that's my problem.
But I, that, that's like, this is like, again, this has been here forever. And it's like one house instead of four. I, I don't know what I can do to get through to this board. We've been put in terrible position.
Yes.
It's been four years of review for reduced density, minor subdivision. I mean, I don't even know what to say, and changing a pre-existing non-conforming use to a conforming use. How, I mean, what am I missing?
No one disagrees.
This is a great application.
That you've been, been put in a-
This is a great application. You have to use the rule of reason at some point. You have to be reasonable at some point.
Right now, I, personally, I'd be, I'm reasonably upset with the zoning board.
There's nothing I can do about that. It took me 10 months to get a decision.
You, was, to get that decision is marvelous. When, when this occurred before the planning board, it was going to be a flag lot. And this board is really, with the, what's left of the land in the village, ownership by a flag lot is important, because it ends future disputes, which always, I've written easements personally from time to time. I wrote three last year. If there's a dispute, it's, it's between, it doesn't involve the village. A flag, a flag lot is the most satisfactory in terms of future governance for the owner. And we have a bias as the planning board. We did one that was approved years ago. I think I was on the approval. I was a rookie just filling in for somebody.
This, this is a-
I mean, I, I don't know where to go with this.
This is a big issue for the planning board, and we've been down this path on an application within the last 12 months, right? On this one, and this is one-
But this is a different application than what you've been down the road on, because this could have been four lots, and it's two. This is changing a pre-existing non-conforming business use to a residential use compliant with the zoning. What you have there does not comply with zoning. What we're proposing would make it more compliant with the zoning in a very significant way. And it would be very significant for the surrounding residential neighbors, too. And I think, I, I really think, you know, I would implore you to talk to council and talk to your planners, you have two of them right here, and hear from them about the importance of looking at the big picture and being reasonable as a board and understanding what we're trying to do versus hanging your hat on a distinction without a difference. Because that's what you're doing. And it's, it's very difficult to stand here after four years of, of going through this process and be stuck between two boards. And it's certainly not something the applicant has done or deserves for this particular application. Because like I said, if you look at this application, it's a good application.
You know, we've given you feedback. That's all we can do, right? And you can either choose to ignore that feedback or argue it, but that's the feedback. All right?
I just, I'm not sure where to go from here. Are you telling me to go back to ZBA?
Yep.
You are.
Ask them to come to see me. They've screwed up the stuff from both sides of that street so far.
I, I think that unless this, unless the rear property owns that driveway-
Is that what you're saying?
It's a non-conforming use. It's a non-conforming use.
I'd love to hear from you.
Maybe he makes-
I can't think of anything.
That is what the comprehensive plan recommends. We've been down this path on a, on a proposal out on Hill Street. You know.
I think you're ignoring all of the important factors about this case. And, and just, it's a detail.
Good. Anything else?
Nothing to say.
Any other comments, board members?
Well, if you could please read my submission, because it does actually cite the law. So I'm hoping you'll read it, and maybe you'll be persuaded by that.
I was hoping, I was hoping it had a list of easements that exist in the village. It's very hard to find. There's an old one.
Well, there's certainly a lot of parcels that were created without a flag access by this board in the past. And I can, I can find them for you and submit them to you.
And those were all done before the most recent comprehensive master plan.
Well, the most recent comprehensive plan doesn't even apply to this application, because it's not the law.
Our last research indicated those of us stuck with this issue. Most of them were done before zoning. Fairly is an easement.
Okay.
You know, the driveway into Mokamano is an easement. It's, it is almost 35 feet wide. These are big, basically private roads. Sometimes they call the driveways easements, so that everybody owned it jointly. But easements of this narrow and this build, the Carl, people took it over for, I, Aquino took it over for, it's a non-conforming use in the back. I've been there many times. And they, that, that building, I forget the date, what it was in about. It wasn't right away. It was enlarged to the south to create that. It's been used for a long time, but it moved as far as it could to still have access to the back, to go in, in all the construction. That was a construction, non-conforming use to the back. Absolutely. You outlined it perfectly. Your homework is-
To no end.
Complete. So it's, it was, it was an easement used to get a truck through to back to do the-
There are deliveries to the back, to the wood shop.
Yeah. It was a non-conforming use in the back.
It's still a non-conforming use.
Very useful. Oh, yeah.
Do you think you can get some input from the neighbors?
I do have input from the neighbors. They met, they came over, and I met with one neighbor. I heard from another neighbor. One neighbor called me and said that they would be very happy that deliveries of wood would no longer be, be, being made to the back and that it would be changed into a residential use. Another neighbor came over, and she actually had a question about the proposed setback of the front office, the six-foot to the west side, because she was confused and thought that that was going to be used on the, on the second lot, so that, so that the second lot would have a six-foot setback, but that's not the case at all. So that was just a misunderstanding. And then obviously, she supports the residential use of the rear property as well, as, as do all of the budding residential neighbors. You're missing an opportunity.
Good upgrade. Absolutely. Good idea. House back there is a good idea.
Thank you.
I would ask that you close the public hearing.
We're not going to close the public hearing on this. I'm not going to-
There's no public, there's no one from the public.
I'm not going to close.
Unless there's someone online. You only continue a public hearing if there's a public interest in the application.
Keep it open to deal with-
I'm going to keep it open. I'm going to keep it open.
Mr. Greenwald.
I'm going to keep it open. Yeah, okay.
I mean, just for the board's verification, if we, with a sketch plan that we don't have the 62-day clock issue, which we would have with the preliminary plat, or which we would have with a, I'm sorry, a site plan. So closing or opening, we're not really setting ourselves into a trap.
I don't even have a sketch plan, because I'd like to see where the, the building site is on this, right? That, that's an important part of the decision.
I'd be happy to put a building envelope on the second lot, but if the board's inclined to give us a chance to be approved by easement, because I just told you, I've been doing this since 2020. To go back, it's a lot of time, effort, and money, and without a certain outcome, to go back to ZBA. As I told you last time, ZBA said they weren't going to grant the extra variances, because they're charged under the law, but not granting the majority of variances that they needed to. They wanted to reduce the number of variances to the extent they could, because that's what they're charged with.
Right. But the facts have changed in the sense that the back lot in what was presented to the ZBA did not own that flag pole. And now what we're saying is-
No, it was presented. That's what you're missing. It was presented with the flag pole. They made me withdraw the application and resubmit with the easement.
Yep. Yeah, that's unfortunate.
They did it.
Yeah.
That is correct. That is what transpired.
It's very unfortunate.
That is unfortunate.
That's what they did.
And if you look at their record, you could see why.
Yeah, that is unfortunate. In any event, we're going to leave this open. If there's no other business in front of the planning board, a motion to adjourn.
What, what are you adjourning this to?
Oh, so we want, we need to adjourn this to a specific date?
Yeah.
I'll do it, too. I, I mean, if you want to go to the May, the next May meeting, we'll, I'll adjourn it to that.
Okay, thank you.
So motion to adjourn.
Thank you, board members.
Motion to adjourn Main, North Main Street LLC to our next May meeting. I don't know the date off the top of my head. May 20th. Second?
Twenty.
Second. Second, thank you. In favor? Aye, opposed? Okay. Uh, motion to adjourn, yeah, sorry, Alex.
Anything else?
Oh, is the movie, yeah, the, are they movie theater people here?
They are on the agenda. Before we get to them, I just want to know, there may have been a technical on the agenda for Conamara, if there's a request to re- to, to, before it hasn't acted on that.
Okay. Conamara is that lot line on First Night?
Oh, yeah.
So, uh, motion to adjourn Conamara to the June 3rd?
I believe that was their request.
Adjourned, yeah, adjourned to June 3rd.
Okay.
I'll move Conamara to June 3rd.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
We also have pending site plan applications on the board's agenda. Excuse me, numbers two, three, and four, none of these have, have new submissions at this point. We don't have a request for adjournments for them either. And I'll give them an action that we take at this time.
Any action we need to take? These are for Brian Kelly, White Street.
That's Brian Kelly, 74, 2 LLC.
Yep.
Just adjourn.
Just leave them open, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I would say do an adjournment.
So, uh, Brian Kelly, 74 White Street, 36 Windmill Lane, and Hill, uh, those three. Brian Kelly, 74 White Street, and 36 Windmill Lane. Motion, can I have a motion to adjourn those till June 3rd, please?
Also move?
Second, all in favor?
June 3rd?
June 3rd.
Not the 20th, the June 3rd?
June 3rd.
To June 3rd?
June 3rd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Um, before we get to the movie theater, can we take a two-minute break, please? Okay? Two minutes, and we'll be right back and finish up with the movie theater. Amanda, two minutes, okay?
No, just, just an info there.
Is there anyone else online? Go.
Um, can you just, I'm sorry, that, they, they went from the Brian Kelly, 74, and 36 were all adjourned, 74 White and 36.
Yep. Numbers, numbers two, three, and four.
And Hill Street, we're going to listen to it. We're going to listen to it, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for getting that.
It's a close issue. It's a problem, because the owner, the person who owns the flag.
Can you get the appropriate, right? But the ZBA is saying they can't like buy one?
The ZBA said, you know, it was too narrow. It was too narrow. It just fits a truck.
So you just don't, I mean, so they, it's why.
The reason it just fits a truck was because Carl, who had bought it years ago, built an extension, and I could go in and talk to the guy. Just, well, just in the back and use the non-conforming use. It's a brick, just baseball building across. And everybody wants to get rid of that, get rid of that stuff. And that was, it was done in a second, man.
Seventy-six, or seventy-seven, I think. I think seventy-six or seventy-seven, if I remember.
Hi, I'm Sean.
The guy, the guy should be. It's a hairy wild. And here's the lady who used to build the standard, the metal car that the tennis. And Aquino, and there's seven more, with John Aquino, another builder. And Aquino's son's a patient. And Carl, brother, and Carl, brother's experience.
Other people who was in there, and that would be the other space, like in that office. So it doesn't work.
No, 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 that's, we have, that's by the station. It's Carl, Caleb, Caleb, or A.
Oh, the killer.